Our next topic is the special events. And again, I know this is one of the ones we talked about a year ago with the retreat. James has the update now.
I do, and I have too much energy to sit because I had coffee this morning. So, mayor and council, of course, special events is just a small part of what the city does, both in terms of staffing and budget and workload. However, it's an area that people pay a lot of attention to. And the public continually asks for more. We're trying to give them more. So I wanted to just give you a quick overview this morning, give you some of our highlights from 2017, and some of those coming up in 2018. And there's a couple of points where we'd maybe like some direction from council. Just a reminder about the purpose of our special events is really twofold. One is to give our residents an improved quality of life, things for them to go do that are enjoyable and ideally good for the family. And the other is to try and draw visitors into Lewisville. Now, most of our citywide special events are funded through the hotel fund, with some exceptions, Stroll is split. But most of them are funded through the hotel fund. So the tourism part is very important to us, but we always try and keep in mind that the Lewisville residents want to come out too. In fact, the percentage of Lewisville residents at the events ranges from about 40% at Western Days up to about 70% at Holiday Stroll. So depending on the event, about half the crowd is local, about half the crowd is not from Lewisville. When they're held in Old Town, part of the intent there is destination development. Old Town, we picture, and we had the vision shared with us by council, that this will be an entertainment district. It'll be a thriving, active place to go and have a good time for visitors and for residents. So when we bring events down there, it's not always a matter of having the biggest possible event with the biggest possible crowd. Sometimes it's just a matter of having a steady flow of events. So for example, next month when we have St. Patty's in the Plaza on March 17th, that will start a sequence where we will have at least one public event every month till the end of the year. And in some months, we'll have seven or eight different events. Trying to give a flow on different nights and different weekends so people have a lot of options. And we counted up last year, a lot of this is estimates, so I can't guarantee the number, with the exception of Western Days, we're really solid on. But about 75,000 people came into our citywide special events last year. That doesn't include the ones that Parks do, the Funny Bunny, Color Palooza, that are primarily for local residents. 75,000 people. Again, roughly half of those visitations are from outside of Lewisville. So budget this year, just under $1 million for citywide special events. You see there, as I was saying, the vast majority of that is either Hotel Hotel Fund, $570,000, or the Community Events Fund, which is a little under $350,000. Community Events is where we get our ED sponsorship money, some of that goes there. Event sponsor money goes there, and event revenue, especially with Western Days. You'll see a number coming up a little bit on Western Days. It does generate revenue, not enough to pay for the festival, but it certainly helps. General Fund actually only has $54,000, and most of that is red, white, and Lewisville because fireworks, the state has said fireworks shows are not a tourism function. And then a portion of Holiday Stroll. Again, that one is 40% out of town, 60%, or 70%, sorry, 70% resident, 30% out of town. And so it makes sense that there'd be some general fund expenditures there. And a tiny bit for Risk Fund for rain insurance, which paid off big when it rained a couple of years ago, and we got our money back out of that. Western Days is by far our largest, that's almost $700,000. And that budget has continually gone up, partly because we get more revenue and more sponsors, and partly because the cost of entertainment keeps going up. We've been blaming Windstar Casino for that for a while because they have plenty of money and they don't mind spending it. And this year, we've had a new development, that Choctaw is decided they're going to get into the game, so now they're bidding against each other. And unfortunately, that drives the whole price up. So we're trying to be very frugal and very careful, but they are costing money. So about 40% of that $679,000 is just for the main stage entertainment. Our headliner is usually running between $150 and $220,000 is the range we're looking at for our number one headliner. And our second headliner is in the $70,000 to $80,000 range most years. Just so you know, we're doing all this with two full-time and one part-time staff. You get an idea, there's a city to our south that is well-known for festivals, and they have 12 people. We have two and a half. So we rely on volunteers and a lot of help from all these departments that are here watching going, "Oh yeah, another event." This is our scheduled events, it's pretty full. A couple of notes, St. Patty's Texas File is new for 2018. Last year, we had St. Patty's in the Plaza, and then we had Texas Independence Event that rained out, so this year, we combined the two, still in March. And so we're going to have a Texas flavor to it, since March is very big for Texas history. Another new one is the Fiesta Chara in May. A chariada is a traditional Mexican horsemanship demonstration. It's not rodeo per se, it's mostly demonstrations with some events and some competitions. And we're working with outside promoters, they're bringing in Little Joe and La Familia, which in the Latin market is kind of like brain, well, Elvis is dead, but you get the idea. Little Joe is not dead. And as you go through the rest of these, you'll know, now, Best Little Brew Fest in Texas, they're moving from June to October, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And there's two items that just this week got confirmed. One is the Maiden Bill is ready, Mass Shared Table in October, and we will assist them with that. And Brew Fest wants to do in June around their usual date, they want to do a little preview taste of Brew Fest. They booked the date, we don't know anything about it yet except they want to have it. So pretty full schedule, we'll talk about these in the subsequent slides. So let's look at 2017, it was a very busy year. Started with St. Patty's in the Plaza, brand new event, threw it out there, thought, you know, whether it's iffy in March, whether it's good, people like St. Patrick's Day, we might get a few hundred people, we had 1,200 people. When Ferguson Plaza was full that night. We did try to turn the water parade, it's very, very hard to do good filters in there. It added cash sponsorship also, so we had good numbers there with cash sponsor, we have a 1,200 turnout. Color Palooza, just a couple of photos to remind you, and this is coming up in Echo Alley. Go slide. So about 3,500 people came out, kind of depends on who you ask, but 3,500 is a number we feel comfortable with. And that has gone up each of the past four years. Had a little bit of rain in the first couple of years, where we started at 1,200, about 1,800, and then we thought about 2,500, and last year, 3,500. So we're seeing a really good trend. Echo Alley did great, we have 14 different stations at Echo Alley. They filled up as soon as we made it available, these participants, environmental groups, and of course, Liva, and utility groups, they love it. And so as soon as we said, "We're integrating, sign people up," we had 14 people sign up and we were done. So we're looking at ways to expand that, we're looking at ways to integrate that more into the entertainment. And we'll talk about that during the 18th. And then, the tie-dye area actually ran out of 2017 shirts. 2016, we printed some white shirts with the logo, and the LHS band came out and ran that for us. You pay $5, and then they would help you tie-dye your old shirt. And went really well, enough so that our vendor, Chris D's on Main Street, kept printing more shirts for us. But the last load of shirts, we wound up keeping most of. This past year, there was a limited amount they could do, we totally ran out and ran and grabbed the 2016 shirts and threw them out there and ran out of those too. So people like making those tie-dye shirts, and I like the fact people walk around school advertising our event for, and pay us to do it. KTA Jam Session, obviously a popular event, continues to grow in popularity, this is the Pipe Syndrome, so when they come out on Friday night during their symposium. About 5,000 people turned out, it's really hard to measure this one because this crowd moves a lot. But about 5,000 people, it definitely go the Plaza and Church Street and up into City Hall as well. We're working with outside vendors to arrange a large outdoor video screen. One thing we found moving to the Plaza, the Plaza does not have a strong slope. So if you're up on the stage, you've got a great view all the way to the back of the Plaza. If you're on the grass in front of the stage, your view can be obstructed. And that's where the drills are done, that's where the firefighters do the pucks and drums. Not on the stage, we put the band on the stage. So we're looking to do a video screen so that if you can't see them directly, you can at least see them on the screen. We're reviewing the possibility of moving back to City Hall Plaza, because there, the elevation was good, they marched in the middle. The problem that we see is it really restricts the crowd, they can't see them well because you just have a smaller area. Fire department preference, in talking with Terry, is that they really prefer to stay in Wayne Ferguson Plaza and try to address the visibility issue. We think they've got a solution for that. Festival Brew Fest, that was held in June last year. Heat, conditioning problem. I've been up in Texas, it gets hot during the summer, I don't know if you've noticed that, but it does. Had about 3,100 people. That number looks like it's down, because we told you a couple of years ago, it was 5,000. But this year, we did the counting, and we're comfortable with this number, and we practically thought 5,000 is a little bit exaggerated. But they've been between 3,000 and 4,000 every year based on ticket sales and volunteers. So 3,100 is a stable number. We feel like in June, probably won't work from that. That's probably as much as you could do in June, so they are looking at moving, they are moving to October this year. That event is put on by Cloud Nine Charities, Ken Cloud, Cloud Nine Charities, and then Nager Spinson does the labor. And then we provide sponsorship and provide some logistics to them. Sounds of Lewisville, our nine events in one package. And these are the weekly concerts that are held Tuesday nights in the Plaza. Used to be the amphitheater of the Pointers Plaza, and then the MCL Grand Courtyard, and now they're in Wayne Ferguson Plaza. And the move from the courtyard to the Plaza has doubled the rents. Very fortunate here, we doubled the rents. And this year, we had a couple of crowds that were in the 1,000 people range. Total was about 10,150 people estimated for the eight concerts. So you run the map on that, we're averaging more than 1,000 tonight for those eight concerts. I will add that 5,000 of those were for one show, and that was a lot for us. We did the fireworks, we brought in two bands that day, a military-related band and the Penny, Tom Penny Tribute. Had 5,000 people packed into that area, it was full, there were lawn chairs everywhere. And the other night, it was about 750, and not for the other seven. And then, we did have the Farmer's Market on Church Street during those. And early on the season, it worked pretty well, later in the season, it started getting hot, and the vendor that was doing that for us opened another market on the same day in another city, and half of our vendors went over there to try that out. And it didn't do that well after that. And then once the concerts were done, it did not bounce back, and they decided in August they were done. And they discontinued that contract, which we'll talk about again in a minute, we'll talk about Holiday Stroll. So we're working on options, but Farmer's Market, at this point, we don't expect to return in 2018. In fact, we're closing up that one, we're pretty sure. And then the fireworks, we thought it was good to have fireworks in Old Town. We did get some posts on Facebook, "Wow, what's that explosion? What was the fireworks we talked about?" But sidelines were a problem. It launched from the Emperor Trinity side, right across from the train station, and that's in a dip, that's in kind of a little downward swell there. And because of the fallout area, the largest shell we could do were air shells. And they just didn't high enough to get good view from Wayne Ferguson Plaza. And especially in the first year, we did a few test shots, but we weren't certain which direction people should look. So essentially, the first one, a lot of people went around in the sky and running around to find the place they could see them. We also had, because it was July 4th, the fireworks vendor we've worked with for a number of years has done a great job, they had six or seven other shows, and we not, they not there, see, they're heating up like they're cheating. And so they had some issues on site that we are aware of, we addressed with them, we got a refund, a lot of our money for them. So about half of their large shells never went off. So when you saw gaps, where there's boom, boom, and then nothing for about 20 seconds, there were supposed to be some booms in there, and they just didn't go. So we've talked with the vendor, and so next year, we'll be on the 4th, we'll be on the 3rd, and they are planning to send, they say they're cheating, their homework will be out there with us. Western Days, the cooking, the kids, the gunfights, the cattle. This event, of course, has been around in some parts since 1964, as best we can tell, took a few years off in the early 2000s. This year, attendance, 26,164, that's the second largest crowd we had. The highest is about 29,000. And this number, we feel really good about, we do gate counts, that's one reason we do ticketing, we have volunteers at the gates. We do some estimates, like the crowd watching the parade outside of the festival zone, we estimate based on visuals, but other than that, we count pretty much everything. The event revenue is $185,000. That comes back in, and that pays for the next year's festival. So that's money that goes right back into Western Days. And by the way, beer commission on Saturday night, $27,000. That's 5,000 more than the biggest beer knock ever had. So the Randy Rogers Band either makes people happy or sad when they drink, when Randy Rogers Band is playing. And with all that, I think Chief Thurler would back me up, we have very few incidents on the ground. There's always a couple of guys that drink too much and start getting loud, they see a cop walk up, and they suddenly realize they really should just stop talking. So, right, really bad for that. The estimated economic impact of $1.9 million. Now, what that means is, this event generated $1.9 million of spent money in Lewisville that would not have been spent here otherwise. We don't use a multiplier. A lot of cities, in fact, pretty much all cities use a multiplier, and there's a story I could share where, you know, I've lost time about why I don't, much later on. But multipliers, I think, can be somewhat simpler. For example, the Super Bowl was in town a number of years ago, they used, I think it was an 18 times multiplier. The idea being that every dollar spent by an out-of-towner would be spent 18 more times. I just think one is enough. So 1.9 is very conservative, and we do that because I can show you how we counted this number, and I can back it up. I can't back up two or three or four times multiplier. And my favorite one here is our onsite survey, 97% of the people said the event was excellent or good. So 97% liked the event, and 100% said yes, and would recommend it to a friend or a family member. So even those 3% that thought it was just okay, would still tell people to come back. October concerts, these start the second Tuesday in October, we take the first, we call to recover from Western Days. And this year, we had about 2,000 people that showed up for the four shows. And it comes on October 31st, I know Councilman Daniels talked about this just last night, we had Here Comes the Mummies. And this is a band from Nashville, and in the contract, we are required to refer to them as 4,000-year-old Egyptian mummies. And so they are, because the contract says they are. And it was great, now, we had to move that one indoors into the MCL Grand because of raining, and it was still packed, did a great show, making changes on the fly, we already approach them about next year. It's penciled in, they just haven't signed a deal yet, but they were fine. Brings us to Old Town Holiday Stroll. Remember, we're looking right now at 2017, we've got some of the slides 2018 coming up after that. So last year, at your direction, we split it into two events. The first one was on the November 18th, the Saturday before Thanksgiving. And that had the festival-type events. That had the skating rink and the snowballs, and it had the entertainment, it had the lighting ceremony. So what you would think of as a festival was held that Saturday. Had about 2,500 people come out for that. By comparison, of course, we had bad weather two years in a row. When we were having good weather, our crowd was somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000 for the whole thing. And that included the parade. So that included the breakfast and the toy run. So 2,500 just for this park, we thought was a very strong number, largely because the weather was good. The second event was held on Saturday, December 2nd, that's our traditional date for the Holiday Stroll. And this was really just three elements, it was the breakfast with Santa from Rotary Club, motorcycle toy run that Parks puts on, and then the parade. And when the parade was done, the event was done. And here, our total was a smaller number. We don't really have a solid number for this one, just because it was really hard to count. This was a very mobile crowd, going from spot to spot. But Rotary Club sold a lot of tickets. We heard somebody told the Rotary Club that they, that's the most they've sold, that they supposedly exceeded, they can't have a number there. The number I heard is 1,000 tickets, I don't know if that's true, that might be something exaggerating, it was a lot.
No, it's like 950 breakfasts.
I was really close. So 950, it's good to have Rotary in San Antonio, that's true. So 950 tickets sold, which is a big, big crowd, I don't even sell tickets there, you can have 950 in those days.
Well, Kiwanis did very well, James.
Kiwanis did great. They laid them, they left. I bar for Rotary. And before we get into service competition here, the toy run had about 350 entrants, which, we had a year about six years ago that we had 600 entrants. And at that time, we were the, there were only two toy runs that weekend, now there's a lot of toy runs. And at that time, we had a much longer route that went through all three cities. We don't go through the other cities anymore because they realized that they were having to pay their comps to out and do a route for our event, so they declined. So now, it starts in Old Town and goes down the highway to the Harley-Davidson dealership. And so our number at 350, we feel like is probably about where, you know, for good weather on a good day, that's probably a good number. Just a lot more competition, but they brought in lots of focus. The parade, honestly, was smaller than it used to be in terms of entrance and in terms of crowd. Part of that, we think, is because the two previous years, we didn't have a parade because of the weather. So that habit is broken. And part of it is just, for whatever reason, some routes that traditionally participate, especially churches, were not there this time. So now we're looking at 2018. You're going to see some of the same events pop up, I'm going to tell you how they might look different this year. So St. Patty's Texas File, remember, we're combining two events. It'll be the first event of the year. We have an Irish dance group, we have a folk music group, Rathmore is going to do Celtic rock. Rathmore was at the KTA last year, I believe. And then Texas Rockabilly with two tons of steel. So you see the Irish for St. Patty's, you see the Texas for Texas, but basically, it's just a party in Old Town, we think people will enjoy it. Fiesta Chara, I mentioned some about this event, we looked at the schedule, we are, we're looking forward to it. And one of the really good things about this is we're doing it at a Lewisville rodeo arena. The rodeo arena is one of those things that we feel like has been underutilized in the past, and partly because of the facility itself, partly because of trying to coordinate the Saddle Club and so forth. We're working very closely with the Saddle Club on this, they're actually going to do the parking as a fundraiser. And we're making some facility adjustments, I was talking with Ron Carson Public Works yesterday, House Services yesterday, about some adjustments we can make so that it really works. And we think it's an opportunity to try it out and see what kind of event site can be beyond just rodeo. We did hire a third-party, Vivint Pina, they have a great track record of this type of event, especially reaching the Latino market. And we've talked with this group before, that at some of our events, we don't see a large Latino presence, even though our population is 30% Latino. This, they've been doing a lot of the marketing in Spanish, on Spanish radio, Spanish publications, and of course, we're also doing English, this is not at all exclusive event. But the response so far, especially with Little Joe and La Familia, tells us we're going to have a really good turnout and a very blended, very diverse turnout. So we're looking forward to that. We just need good weather. Sounds are in white to Lewisville, and I'm going to pause a moment on this one, because this has a lot of changes going with it, potentially. So, told about the fireworks last year, we shocked from Emperor Trinity side, we feel like they would work with us again if we needed to use that site, but it's not ideal. So we spent time looking at a map of Old Town to find where else can we shoot fireworks. Looked at the rodeo arena, the houses are too close. We looked at a couple other vacant properties, weren't going to work out. We looked at the Walter Street parking lot, and then they started tearing up the Walter Street parking lot, so we put that off our list. We ultimately looked at what some cities are doing, especially entertainment businesses doing, like Disney and things like that, is rooftop displays or low-level displays. The advantage is, you don't need as much space, and they're usually cheaper. The disadvantage is, you can't see them from this far away. You won't be able to be two miles away and see them. But if you're there, you get a great show, you're really close. So we've had the vendor come out, Keith and Disney toured the roof of MCL Grand with them. And of course, we don't want to do any damage to the roof, the roof already has a couple leaks, we just found during the heavy rain. But the vendor has done this kind of thing before, they feel very confident that there's a good safe way to do it. If only they couldn't, we'd call it off, or we'd put it only in the courtyard or in the parking lot. What will happen here is, most of the fireworks will launch from the courtyard, where they smaller fallout zone, because they're smaller shells. And then some of the pyrotechnics, you know, Roman candles and things, I'm not the expert, they'll be on the roof. So if you're in the Plaza, at City Hall, at the restaurants on Church Street, if you're within about two blocks of MCL Grand, you get a great show. Within about four blocks, you'll get an A show, and if you're far than that, you just drive down to Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Old Town Holiday Stroll, our plan at this point is to continue with the two-day model, and that's what we're working on right now. I have another slide, so we'll get that slide in a minute. So again, best activities on the Saturday, this time is 17th, parade, breakfast, and toy run on Saturday, the 1st of December. One change, and we talked to Maiden Bill about the parade, they like the parade going down the mill. I parked it down Main. So we're going to keep it on Main Street, they like it, the crowd's wanting to watch the parade. The problem we're having is when you go down the mill and head that way, there's not a lot of people watching. We don't have enough barricades to barricade all of Mill Street, and so we're having some people that will come and park in those street-sized spaces early in the morning. And then as soon as the parade's over, they drive out there, even if people still in the street, and that's a safety issue. So we're very concerned about that. But the homecoming parade loops on Mill up to Church and then lets out on Church Street. So we're going to try that for Christmas. We also think they could help those restaurants. The restaurant said that they got really no business from the parades, but if the parade lets out and right by those restaurants, if they do some specials or signs, they're going to stand there and yell, hopefully people will come in. Now, here's something we want you to be aware of. Last year, when we were making this change, we reached out to Maiden Bill, we met, we talked with them by email, they're bored, we had spoken at one of their meetings back in the spring, back in March. Then again, we had a meeting with their leadership in July, June or July, it's one of the J months. And each time, we said, "Do you have any concerns about this?" And they asked some questions, said, "Well, what about this? What about that?" We said, "Okay, but are you okay with this?" They never said, "No, don't do it." Until about two weeks before the time for the event, and they said, "Oh, this is terrible, don't do it." Well, it's way too late to make that change. So we held the event, and on the 18th, we had a really good crowd, remember, 2,500 people came out. And on the 2nd, we don't really have a good number, we felt like it was successful as well. However, Maiden Bill, at least some of their members are still not happy about the split date. And they plan to come to council at some point and ask you to consider one date. That's your decision, we can make anything work, we need to decide way before, two weeks before the event. So right now, we are still planning a split date, unless we hear something different. Pause now, or keep going? Keep going, I was told to keep going. Holiday Market. So the plan in 2017 was the vendor, Fresh, I forgot their name now because I'm mad. They did the market in the summer, they were going to do a market for us at the Holiday Stroll, and possibly do it every week during December. When they walked away from the summer market, they also walked away from the winter market. So we had no winter market. We know there's interest in a winter market, we would love to have a winter market, there's a lot of interest and a lot of value in that. So we've done some research to look at similar markets in the metroplex. We have two things. First, most of them are not put on by the city. Most of them are put on by nonprofits, groups, or civic groups, Rotary, Kiwanis, Quads Rotary. Most of them are put on by other people, and the city lends support. The few that do, that the city puts it on, generally, they get a vendor, like we did with Fresh Green Market, they bring in a vendor. Now, having said that, we feel very confident that we could do it in-house, but not with our two and a half staff. So if we're able to make that acquisition into a full position, we feel like we could indeed do a market, certainly at Christmas and possibly other times of the year as well, using that additional. And you see there, the budget impact of going from part-time to full-time would be $62,000. So we're going to put the request in, potentially it is to you, but when you see it, if you see it, that's the origin of it right there.
Okay. So James, you stay here with the mic and we may ask some more questions. So James has covered a lot of ground on the events and what's happened over the last year. There are a couple of particular places where we're looking for direction from council, and so I want to point your attention to here, and these are all things that James went over in his presentation. For the KTA, the stage location, shall we keep it over where it is now at the Plaza, or should we put it back to City Hall steps? On July 4th, the idea of where the show is, shall we keep it downtown? The date, the 3rd, the location of shooting the fireworks, as he was describing to you, the lower-level shells, or finding another location? And then on Holiday Stroll, maintaining the separate days, and whether or not to include the market, which, as he said, does have a budget impact. So these are the areas for which we would like to get some direction from you all today. You better wanna start on the stage location.
Yes.
Okay? And we've got, we wanna try to move through this relatively quickly, so...
Plus, I have some additional notes, if they're one of yours.
Okay.
I think from a staging point of view, City Hall works better. From an audience point of view, it works worse. It's a tough call. Between the two, I still think City Hall presents better. But it's also facing a better direction, so...
Other folks, other opinions?
I think if you add that video screen, I don't know if you could put it on the stage in Ferguson. And then, you have them at City Hall, and then have the video screen at the stages. So people would still be able to experience what's going on, but it would expand your seating area.
So having the main stage on City Hall and having the video?
Having the video on the Ferguson Plaza stage.
That's probably the one. Which also gets us away from facing, what else?
Other comments on that one? Let me pause it, and I got a Neil, I know you've got some other comments, but let's see. Are people comfortable with that kind of an approach, pursue?
To make sure I understand, so we're gonna take the bag hoppers, and we're gonna put them on the steps of City Hall. And we're gonna put a screen up on the stage, so that people in the park could see the bag hoppers. Is that what I just heard?
That's what I heard.
And then, where does the band, there's always a band that performs after the bag hoppers. Where do they go?
What we did previously, before the plaza was ready, was the band was on the steps, and the firefighters were on the plaza in front of the steps. And then, the audience, we had to rope off that rectangle to make sure people could stay behind it, and they would sit or stand behind the rope.
And I don't know what kind of screen you're getting, I don't know. I mean, those things are mobile now, so I don't, I don't know.
So, maybe, can I clarify, what you all would like is to see that, investigate that direction? And see if that works out or not?
Maybe if the screen is out on Church Street, facing the side of the plaza, rather than on the stage.
Okay, but looking into that idea of having the screen...
What the screen does is creates a new sightline for more seating.
Yeah, if you didn't get a good spot, you still seat.
Okay, anybody, okay, we're okay on that one? Okay, then, the July fourth, a couple of different issues that James described there about the, what his intention is for this year. Keeping it on the third, keeping it downtown. And then, you're investigating, as I, what I heard from you, James, is you're looking into the question of whether to shoot the shells, the lower-level shells, as your first choice.
Well, we're looking at the third, to not be on the fourth. Hardly for that, because there's budget savings, but also, that's our natural Tuesday concert date anyway. Good, what about the next year? The discussion last year that we received direction on was to keep it as close to the fourth as you can, and tied to a Tuesday concert.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, and the third, that's that.
And then, that way, everybody can go to Flower Mountain on Wednesday.
Or...
We should go to...
Or guess what?
Get more than, get more than one chance to see fireworks. Anybody have questions or comments on that?
I think we're fine. Definitely, I'm staying in class today. I don't have a problem with the low-level shells, because it'll be more intimidating fireworks displaying, and hopefully, it'll help drop it to restaurants as well, everybody has their seats. I would say definitely.
The only thing I say on that is, we need to make sure we get as much information out as possible. Because if they think they're gonna watch it from downstream, or a lot of people are upset because they thought they could watch it from other location, we need to say and advertise it as much as possible. You will see it from here, but you won't see it anywhere else.
We can do that, council.
The one thing I would add, council, certainly, I've had conversations with Keith about any potential damage to that roof at the MCL, and again, I wanna be assertive. I want more discussion to make sure we're not gonna have damage. He's shaking his head.
Yeah, I've had Francis visiting with the vendor a couple more times in the last few days, and we're still investigating that. We think that we can be reasonably assertive that there won't be damage, but we're still fleshing it out.
So you all will come back if there's an issue, you'll obviously...
Yes, if I find there's an issue, I'm gonna come back to you.
Right, at this point, that'll be the thing to investigate. Okay, and then, the Holiday Stroll, the two separate days, is the first part of that question. Do you maintain that, or...
I get a lot of comments on that, but I'm pretty eager to breathe.
Okay, yeah, but it's that, give us the succinct version first.
Two days, yes, but I'd like to seriously step back. And part of this is balancing the main mill, and part of this is just the way things match. Is step back and take a real look at what, which one is the morning, which one is the evening, and which ones have a lot of damage. And even to the extreme of looking at, perhaps going to an evening parade, which means lighting the floats. But I think having that feature would be an additional attraction for visitors to kind of see a parade that's different than a daytime kind of parade. There were some comments, I'm not trying to pick on anybody in particular, but too long a parade, too many just vehicle videos. So, I'm gonna just straighten up. You brought up Mill Street, so there's a chance it is coming. And Mill Street doesn't work at all, too, because it's so wide for throwing candy. I mean, it just, it's just a lousy layout. So I think that kind of covers it. But I'd really like to look at what the mix. In fact, one more is that the toy run people, they can't do the parade, they're gone. So, that one doesn't match. So I'd like to look at the whole mix of what's on Monday, and what's morning, what's evening, and, you know...
But still, with keeping the two-day kind of format.
Keeping the two days.
So I did some analysis a few years ago about a nighttime parade, it's doable. The floats are not so much of a problem. Other cities have seen the first couple of years, there's a drop, and eventually, the impact is back. The problem that we encountered that would have an impact on budget is, the route itself is pretty dark. And we would have to bring in some portable temporary lighting, and possibly generators, to light that route for safety.
Other feedback from other folks? Two days, is that good?
Yes.
Two days.
Two days? Okay.
I mean, I think the two days, I don't understand why Maiden Bill doesn't think that's advantageous to bring people down twice to downtown. But, I mean, I definitely wanna listen to them, because in reality, this is a lot of it for them, bringing people into their businesses. So, I'm curious to hear their, why they would be against having two days, and we bring people down to them.
James, doesn't it have something to do with the historic light, or home light tour?
There were two things, council person, heard your comments correctly as well. One is, they felt that it was just too early for them to get ready. Now, Highland Village does it, but they've been doing it for a number of years. They felt it was too early to get ready for the season. And the second was, indeed, OTTS has their holiday tour at homes. And they said that they couldn't get people to decorate their houses that early, so it needed to be December. And I will add, we did offer, if they picked another Saturday in December, we'd bring a band into the plaza and promote it to make it bigger, but that option was not exercised.
But that does kind of go back to the comment about looking at the right mix, two different days.
So, a couple others that's not on there, I'd like to see us start looking at other uses for the rodeo grounds. It's been a long time in common for me, but it's just underutilized. And I think we have opportunity here to do more of it.
You're gonna hear more about that in a little bit.
And then, one last comment, Mike, bring him from on MCL's list. The Soundless Summer Concerts, we're doing warm-up acts now. We're gonna do a warm-up act first, and then the main stage.
That's correct, and I should have mentioned that, it was on the slide, and I forgot to look. We did start the concerts at seven o'clock. And what we found, and you've probably seen it, from seven to eight, the sun is directly down on the cars, which, we're paying them, so they can live with that, although a couple have made a big deal out of it. But really, it's the heat. But around eight o'clock, when the sun goes behind MCL Grand, it gets much more comfortable. So we're still gonna start at seven this year, but we're gonna start at seven with the opening band. So if you missed that first part, or if you're grabbing hopefully food at local restaurants, and you get a little bit late, you still see great entertainment, and the main act will be at eight.